Thank you. Dayton, Dan.
Yes.
That means one.
Yes.
On. That's the one.
Yes.
David Hanks. And here is for the new one. Good.
Are you sure that you're getting the path? You really were getting out of there with any case. So we need to move that moving to some. I wouldn't get it. Moving on. The side of the agenda. Here's the three zero zero three additional district method approval. The single down below is the Asian home six two seven zero four. This is on the lane. And um. Also. Essential buyer department. Three nine zero seven. You want to. There's a. Um. Every other. Thank you. And good luck. I'm. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it is. This is. Great. For this. Off. I.
That's.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the applicant order is very important, so. Yeah. Um, we're resting. In the. Thirty seven point four. Off, right? Daxla, our. In the state. One zero four zero zero. Of. One. The. Four hundred and fifty five. And then fifteen four four five one three hundred thirty three. For each. Standard. Lane. So this is the map of the location of the property on top of the lane. This is a picture of the. Top of the. So fifteen two two five is a third. This is the location. So this particular property. Into the family home. Some strange. Meadows. They say. Two. There are two possible apartment spaces located in the driveway. And used. That was other. Simple inside structure. So fifteen two two five. Be. Location. I'm. Um, decided about two months. Down. Personal areas. And the proposed use. Similar scope. And that's going to be on the. Um, fifteen two five. See. I. So. So we identified that uses the power. Actually. Side. Um, pro code use. Criteria. In and seeking. In violation of federal and district. That's the. That. Um. So. Maybe that'll have to be. About. Is. Um. The operator has not ready to have to. Register with the city. Being required to. Um, they're required to have two off street apartment spaces. Who are about four drive away. Uh, based upon the home size. Those things. Yeah. Better. And. Even at a location. Some of them. Cannot have RVs. Being being required for. Never seen. By. That it has. Management. Please. The new standard. That's not a hot thing to. Trash day. So staff is already. Conditioned to adopt. This order. On. Three dash seventeen. This is. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Director. I'm. Public. This is fifteen minutes. Yeah. And. Begin. So. We need to know if it's. Um, that by. If you're like. Be. Please state your name and address. That's long.
Seven long. Uh, three seven zero four. Coffee lane. Um, yeah, so Sarah, my wife and I have lived in Newbury here for the last. At Woodman last year. Uh, we absolutely love it here. Uh, we love the town, love the surrounding area. This is our primary home. Um. We run a camping website called Third. We travel. Our kids live out here. And would like to build a short term. Uh, they'll. So. Um, we have a couple of long term rental properties. We're. Streaming with this. Uh. We're a really solid team of. Uh, local handyman, uh, contact people, uh, cleaners, electrician, plumbers, et cetera. Both, uh, from our local renovation and importment. Um. And we are just, uh, looking forward to keepness of our product. That is my name.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's their. Right? Do.
Sure.
Do.
Including as part. You can make it all.
Mr. Commissioner, Patty.
Welcome for everyone here to the traveling. Um, we're kind of here to stay. As we're. Having a kid. From Woodman. First. Family. Museum. That is. The men. From the. Both. Here. Calling. The. That was.
Um, all we. We did. Should have gone. All. Um, probably. But. Um, we worked with. Electrician. And then on that. Uh, we're informed on that. And, uh, we have a local team here. Um. Also have. The name. Or the course.
Do you have local? People? Right. Yeah.
Yeah, we. We have that in place.
Then you're. You're. Entirely. Their outdoor space. Will they, uh, during the experience of growth and. Know they look.
I will be dating her while that. Says. Our. How is it? Something. That. So. No. But. We're. Chair. And it'll love anyone that comes to you. Back. I. Really. And. And it's church. And those are not planning on doing a lot of rental. Rent out for six months. But it is our home. That was. Um, and the website. Uh, but you know.
Great. And I noticed that you do, uh, plan to. Have. Actually. Yeah, the criteria is. Responsible. Find.
Yeah, it's a good question. So, um, you know, long term, we'll see that. Uh, we know that first. But here. Fair. Um, maybe a lot better. Or a lot skinnier. A lot better. Um. That question back here. Probably remember. Man, long term, I didn't. Very. Do I. Love. The earth. I don't think I just. I mean. It's. Different. Aren't the earth. He hasn't spent all of our. It's crazy. Other. Like. Not. Right. Very. Fortunately. Also. Um, although that. That will happen. On. The. All the. Uh, the energy. That's. Um, that's. That is. That's. And something.
Wouldn't be a lot of thoughts. I mean.
Again.
Um, this, you know, those properties.
Uh, we're property in New Southwood. And here what helps. Uh, all that. Sorry. Um, and I. He felt that. He was. Uh, he's. Fifty. And thirty. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. The area of the playground. They do. The. And. That. It's like. Here. They understand that. Or. You know. Notified. That there is.
And that.
That's. My. There is. Between. The light slide days. When you water. Each. Those. One.
Yeah, we'll keep. But it knows on that. We. I think. I would. On. Pictures. But. That. Has. So we are. Going.
Good. So. Thank you.
I asked. How many work. I didn't.
Hold on. Have you. You. Report? Pretty fair. Can I have that? We don't.
Ask you about. We're kind of here.
Hold on. Let me. Let me. Here.
I think nobody. Um, there for a year. To their house.
Would you take your, um, mayor?
They said for ten eighteen eleven three or eight. I'm. Right in the middle. Always. And you only get out. And I'm sure a lot of you didn't. Where they would. Uh, that people living down here. In. Neighborhood. And why you're trying to make use of their special. Right. You don't stay here for a year. Without listening. Without. Thanks to. These people. That were actually here in the place. Today. So you didn't let.
And. Are you addressing the commission?
I'm addressing everybody.
You need to address the commission. Thank you.
Allowing something like this to happen. Within everything else that is going on. In that section of the world. Is. We already have. Our own issue. I wonder actually how many of the neighbors of this foot house. Has been impressed. Who has actually been there for years. Who's raising their kids. Paying their taxes. And having to deal with everything else that's just been going on. Will even probably change this. How many of them actually know? Get it. Even people that moved in. They're not moving in there. They're. They're actually moving in there with the. Plan of. Turn. Of. Right.
And.
I love that.
How would you like to be?
His.
His. How do you know this? Because your. Your test. Directly. From. Test. Property.
For me.
And.
I think you approve of. That the neighbors are aware of it. That they're aware of what is planned for. I know when I get somebody new. Near me. In my decisions. If. Their actions. Living there. Raising their children. They have to do our children's right. Getting an idea of what is going on. Really. And what you're going to do.
Good.
And you got many letters. From any of their neighbors. Our agents. Who are. Or the. Sorry. Now. Another one. What you. Guys are all really good at. That is a small portion of people that are young stuff. Is you completed decisions inside. And then a lot of different. And like we said. Why won't we know? They didn't let it go out to the neighborhood. To let them know what they wanted to do. Just. I'm sorry. Please.
Uh, I'm sorry. Um, Fisher, right? Um, yes, the orders were out. That is required by law to notify the five hundred feet of. All property around it. And also. Probably. And they register. And other places. To hear. Sometimes.
You know. That's what he did. And I. Say that. Because. Actually. I.
So I'm just saying that sometimes with. A lot of things going on, the. People may not be as. People are sure. Or. Going. Coming.
I. I mean. That has to be. There. The. Um, on the. That. That. But with that. Because it's coming here and this is. And that's. 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 A lot. And I was. Understand. Getting. So. We're. Us. To. And that. Name. Is old. Neighborhood. Both. When you people come in. People that are like. Hopefully want to do. We have songs. And hills. And. We use them. I know that name. When people move in and live around neighbors. We use them living near you. And. We always say. We are here because we don't want to live. We don't want. Newer. Department.
But we're being able to. Against. Your. There.
Again. The money is. They put. Practically alcohol. We get over. From. Your. Personal.
Year. And year. You. About thirty.
I just answered for the first time in all of you guys. I am dating all longer. And then. I'm an airline. So I know. This. Is actually just because it's required. I know positions are already made, but I do know every single doctor. And a trend. It's me. So I know the positions are made. Doctor's already very excited. It matters to it. It doesn't matter who. You can have a bathroom. I've been here. If you guys go out of that room. We're setting aside on things. No matter what we said. So. And still. So I know. I'm not. I didn't. A long time. But I'm on the record. This. None of you must have. The doctor. Because I watch you all over.
Please.
Thank you.
Um, thank you.
Okay, is there. You see no further, um. Just for public. And this time we both about. Because. We should. Are. Uh, that's. I don't know. Oh, I. Yeah. If they have. Like. I. I'm. Here.
Yeah, so just to be clear, we, um. They just sent a letter out. Get every single person. Five hours. And. Plus we put. A giant sign. On our. Last. Six. Month. But. Every neighbor on my street. Who I. But. I thought. That will. Comes together. Do that. There's no. There's no pride. People. And. Issue. On. They want to take that out.
Sir. Do you have any questions? Any questions? Uh. Further questions? Mr. Paul. No, so this. I really. So. About the. President. According to. The. That. Presentation.
Staff's recommendation. Mr. John. I'm. Eighteen three. Dash.
Obviously. Thank you.
And. Um. Commissioner. Commissioner. Fisher, right? Um, given the public testimony. It is very appreciated that other. Others are standing here coming forward. But the criteria that we have to by law look at. Is. Written out in our application. Yeah, it complies with all of the criteria. So unless people have something as. They can cite in our criteria that would not allow this. Um. I feel that it's pretty. No friends. So. Straightforward. There's. Uh, people within. Remember. That have come forward to this. Please.
Sure, I. Have seen. No evidence. But. A statement. That. Witness. The applicant is. Uh, intending to use the property for anything other than being. Or absent such evidence. I'm. Right. That. There's no leading reason for us to reject. The. To do so is to against the law. To be challenged. And. And you do. Which I hear deeply. Um, as. Place of my residence. For as a third generation. I'm looking. After seventy five years. I care about. Thank you. Mr. Dale. Anyone else?
Please, official. I have. Really. I'm. Go through. If. We're. Using. The.
If it's where we're using the method, see if you can prove those, those are free. Or three seven zero four.
Good thing.
Christian, good.
Thank you, if you get a book.
Sharon three, yes, Dayton Dale.
Yes.
Stephanie.
Yes.
Chris Wright. Mike Perkins.
Yes.
David.
Thank you, the additional use permit is approved, you know. So moving on next up, another additional use permit. And it's um, again, it's part of the physical plan of the hearing. So I'd like that a whole in the hearing for. The D one three dash zero zero four, additional use permit, we will use particular time controlling of our patient level. From that one one four east third street. And I'll call for a second five, that's our day on guy. Hearing on the radio, I think I do the.
Core as one minute, that's a lot of questions. It was all three days on the camera. It means I'm a vice president. Are you fired or a middle person? And you want to. Thirty three five, this is ten one three point seven. It's a. Fast on my. He's one very. But. So. That we know. When it's caused. And that's. Prior to the. Anyways, this is my.
Thank you. Here, I'll again, I'll enter the entire staff and four things regarding this vacation of that patient. One one four east third street, that's the age of three dash zero zero. So the app controller is changed with. The request again is to receive behaviorable, there is system three, there is a. Not in the communication level, from forty third, tax laws are three two nineteen eighty C. One one seven zero zero, it's probably far. Okay, uh, so this is the aerial channel location. Uh, there's the photos of the home street on third. So fifteen by two five oh six oh eight, again, the location size, mine operating. So this is located in, and this is continuing that on the street fires. The first subdivision, there are two off screen parking spaces located in driveway and. Um, the use system battle of residential use in the area, seven residence, regular. Fifteen point two two five oh six oh B, location times I've been. Um, this particular site is located at two that being down ten. For area. Opposed use, similar in fill in size, long sharp vertical and long language, part of the. Fifteen point two two five oh six oh C, or those government consistent code. We have this opposed applications, the app, about the usage of the area. And I got a body of staff according to shows. Find for the M C section fifteen point two two five oh six oh. And then we move into the fifteen point four four five. So for those standards, uh, we've already identified the locations and so. Um, they do have to register with the city, the project, the transit, watching cats. For a better, I guess, part of that patient approved. Mentioned there's two off screen parking spaces, also one in the garage. Uh, this home three bedrooms, couple of max, yes. And all of our vacation, we began at R B stands and where other commercial. Um, they will be required to have a posting. One door, again, listening management company. That's management company, so. Um, please, uh, our vacation standards, act, acts of law, coffee, that's it, today. That written commission to adopt, I mean, over twenty twenty three dash four, so this is going to be. Thank you, Doug, and now we're ready for the public test, one portion. In fifteen minutes, we have hours for primary applicant. And the mission is to whatever it's in the environment, we do have to do five one. And the other thing is here in support. Uh, to say your name in the first word.
Hello, I'm usually, I'm in a long way from work, it's in the front of the street. I have bought this property in two thousand nineteen. Um, I have the governor, he might be going on my. So I have this secret experience, I don't have much to do, I'm starting to pray, I'm already done. And I got five, they're working. Garden in fifteen minutes. They're ready to spread some. So, so I don't stand for any time, I. I have a house for you, so I don't mind you, clearly, of all, they are either one thing, one year, it was. Um, so my intentions are that sorry, I'll support the makeup, but in my fact. And then like graduating. So that's my um, intention, I'm probably the management of it, I'm only the extension person that. I know I should come to a state, but we've been all operated. But on their end, we'd like to know that I have a permit. So. Uh, the hard support thing. Uh, but I will um, do that in. In partnership with the management company, but I will be, I call that a paraphracture. My neighbors have my full group language, taxing it for the need. The ways to play, it's important, contractors, uh, bringing many, uh, in the garden, I write a lot of question. Right, the classes. Contractors, well, they're funny, uh, the door and outdoor.
So thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't hear, did you? It's like.
Uh, it wouldn't really. Yeah, um. You know, the person that we want. I do not know, it's part of the management. But I do have a neighbor, who we don't. Do they do, like repairs and such, especially within. You know, with my neighbors, even the ruins, playing, raising up that. I live, Jordan Warren, more I live, I live about thirty five. So I appreciate it out there. Uh, but I obviously have. My neighbor. Uh, this is. Yeah, I um, I um, that you know, if there was, I can't. Today, so I, because I've lived in this property for a while and been friends with it. All right, so actually, no, why didn't you do me? Right, it is, there was a rest in it, so I would.
And thank you, it's um, the. I didn't see any other. History in the comments, uh. Sure, that's the. Sure, do you have any questions?
We do not, but we are having audio issues, so that everybody can speak into their mic. Loudly, um, because people online are having issues, hearing everything.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the, you know, public test, one question. And as for defining all the questions, that representation.
Staff's recommendation is to adopt order twenty point three dash oh eight. Thank you, let's move on to um, permission of the word.
Three dash zero.
That is zero. Can see everything there.
Permission of the right, wait a second. Uh, things mentioned on the order, we're in order, permitting, people, these are not significant. For a very big model, but rather. More easy, third string.
Thank you very much, we have a minute and a second, we'll call it.
Sharon three. Dayton Dale.
Yes.
Jeff Nebo.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Mike Perkins.
Yes.
Avery.
Thank you. That was for you, so there. And we'll move on to the next time on the agenda. Which is a new logic official hearing. Regarding a request for major modifications, press being processed. You need to be a tighter way, like I know you think easy to drive. So this sounds like calling the order and ask for any extension five and part day contact for a second. Hearing on, um, it was more than.
It was a horse that you say, so I know you got. I have, I are. This question. But last one, I don't want to. I need to. I'm serious, you know, I keep alive. The law says that you are the great, the natural. This is a lie, now it's the base of. If you have any come down, but there's. Tell me, you know, if you're in the other. Permission.
Thank you, and.
Chair, please, your fine, play down, I'm sending you a proposal. And what are we doing in the reading, that's part of the record, also. Here is. Those were the. A longer working, so the next slide. So we have major modifications to a planned unit development and additional use permit. So the applicant would change his business company, L O C. People are pressing all teams, this is required for major modifications to a previously third plan, it's all the additional use permit. Against drop one hundred ninety six, small head family law. Small family structure. What not relevant was like to all the field. It is. Location in the northwest, under China, one two nine five. East track drive, one path line, check bar three two six eight two forty three eight zero zero. That lot is going to seem to be in R two, on the next one. To highlight how that breaks down, how the major modifications gets into the training, so we're improving. Also want to highlight that the figure due throughout my presentation, additional use permit in in developed. We did have in presentation, I believe, their reference to the problem of the last, it may prove. So you'll probably see one unit described, it doesn't change the project. Should, but time, but wait in time. So on October eleventh, twenty twenty, that prior officially, the third unit of all is approved by the New York planning commission. Under word twenty eight dash. Now allow for residential use. Don't use the. Uh, a lot for, it's a finished family residential. First, we'll use that forty dollar. On the next slide. Um, are the criteria that we're gonna be highlighting, that are both in the staff report, we'll be talking about tonight, that includes. Fifteen point two two five zero six zero, the condition use permit criteria. The same three decision, fifteen point two four zero point zero six zero, in general provision for a planned unit development regulations. Fifteen point two four zero zero three zero, early in plan. But. Very nice, so step on the community development regulation. And then fifteen point two three zero zero five zero criteria for sign review. Fifteen point two three zero. Zero, zero, six zero, digital requirement from the end product, product, and fifteen point five zero five zero. Public improvement. The next slide is going to highlight location. So the sign of this, this one law, where everything occurs with problems, we apply a. And show the northern portion, the site of the R two, the northern portion, located in the George site. The adjacent uses include residential uses, but then more thinking, so that could probably. Now, I remember what was the project, residential, although it's all the. And then adjacent noting is the north. Parliament, well, incorporate area. East is R two, and it's with two, south is probably right away, and the probably right ways. And then the west is. The next slide. So we talked, so this is a different aerial, just showing where that project's at, and showing us how like. So, and this also the fact up here is highlighting, press being brought to the T and D. Previously approved for four hundred and five, was paid two hundred fifty lot, planned unit development, additional use permit. To allow residential use in case of them. And that was before again, down the path of. Two three zero, two zero zero, three, and R three, and zero, zero, zero. That's what. So this is another look at it, so this is just the entire, I'm previously approved, additional use permit, plenty of new. It is known as the highlight, and so the text here, we're talking about the nature of personal development. Single family homes, cottage style, single family homes. This all the vision, the staff, and then additional previously for a size of. And then these are the figures to. Eighteen table bit, a large lot, two hundred and thirty property dollars, two thirty one. There were also limitations to additional, one hundred and fifty cents, because there is. Well, the definition. Then there is one, four point four eight or lot, that was created for a lot of users, of people. On the next line. And so this is highlighting, because it's in black and white, it's uh. The large vision, but I wanted to point out with this, that we're looking at, if you go from the left or the right portion of the slide. We see two small head family colonies, so no carla. We see two more as we travel to the right, that are located towards the top of the slide, that would be the the. Western portion of the site, and then we go to the center of the site, closest to the roundabout. I think one of that. Green, so that's drive, and then to the far northwest portion of the corner of the line. You have that. What I did over that, in that field house, that field house. Different from this, but that's in the. This is your portion, right? Southern town. Next slide, these next few slides are going to be going to the building elevation, but there are three different small head family building. So this one is eight new building elevation, the angle regarding silence, department, the plateboard, including building five and six. And on the next slide. Is eight three building style, also various style, permission to play, or just building number one, that's right. The next slide is eight one building time, and that is going to be on the three story, there are thousands of eight buildings. And that is, uh, the sun is the name for building two, three, four, seven, eight. Then the next slide, is a field house elevation, so more of these, uh, two and five. These are all party combinations, so on the next slide, we'll get a combination, or the uh, the criteria. Starting with the conditional use permit criteria, bullets here under fifteen point two two five point zero six zero eight. Located in location size, operating characteristic. Exactly. So one of the items that were fully, knowing that, uh, this type of use, that was proposed in this project, permitted in more two thousand and condition in permit. Um, that's that, second bullet, a little bit of all hang, and then previously approved, additional use permit, U D. The maximum time is allowed for more than. But it's forty eight, it was being rejected, so the project is thirty seven origin. And then there's a project also, the condition of that third bullet, closed modification, not T B M. So there are ten D regulations, so it is. My. Is a. Criteria. Fifteen point two two five. Forty zero. Six. Zero. She's moving. The location. Size. Planning. So. Some of the items that were highlighting here relate to. The. Proposed. Project. Includes. Pedestrian vehicle access to the. Rescue process. For. Pedestrian pathways. Are providing connectivity. Internally. So in the site. Of. Personal. Type. Five. And to the park. It's located. The west. Development. Site. The project includes. Probably. Into the board. Sure. Twenty nine percent of the development. Then the. Just. Taking. Five. During. Period. Is basically about consistency with other portions of the code. Because. In particular. For the purposes of the additional use permit. The. The chapters that are running that there have to do with site design criteria. Development standard. Waiting. Development. Development. It's called. Purpose. Which are talked about. Also. That. What's the findings of that. Are made separately. In. As a result. Um. As a result, the recommendations specifically. The. Portion of this permit. Is because. Those. Is that. Because of those developments. Denver news will go fifteen point. Two. Five. Point zero. Six. So. A. B. C. The red. Winning. Will. City. Red. Move. The initial. Permit. So we're allowed residential use. On. You know. The criteria. This one I wanted to start off with. The purposes. The purpose portion. We always do this for. Like. Criteria. Is the. Fair. Or. For the evaluation. Of the criteria. Both. Flexibility is reflected. And. Standards. And. Those. Path. Wanted to highlight some of these. To me, what stands out. These portions. Put down. Uh. That we're going to show. The purpose for these various regulations of protection. A. Encouraging. Planning. He's providing what. Billy. He's promoting interactive. David. Condition. Fire. Making. Use. Type. Being. In. Shared. Urban. Billy. And. He. Winning. The density requirement. Of. And. But these are things that are considered. We go. And. Right here. So. On the next slide. Here's just the. The. Session. Fifteen point two four zero. Point zero. Two zero. On the next slide. We highlight. Some of those where flexibility is reflected. Where there's some. The. Where to jump into. That. So continuing on to the next slide. Then. Um. The important part of this is that reported. Point. Status. Valuations. If. Valuation. Of the entire. Plan. Develop. As. Need to remember the visit. You made your modification. She was. Over. Right. Development. And. So. Because the maximum allowable density for the rest of the problem. You can see. And be. Is nine thousand. One hundred eighty. Four five. And the proposed project according to density points to. Eight thousand. One. Six. On. That. That is. So that's the. On the next slide. You get into section. Fifteen point two four. Zero. Point zero. Six. Zero. Modifications. For regulations. Not required. There. Higher. That. But on the next slide. And we highlight some of the. Fell. And. Being requested. For those who. Time. Lot. Coverage. Member of. Parking. States. Impired. Little. Department. Flexibility. But. For this. Project. The next slide. We found. Lot. So this one is somewhat related. So. Been required. Parking. Kind of. Purpose. There. Which we applied. In their presentation. Well. But. One of the things that we looked at here in that report. Was. Going back to the purpose. Section. And finding in that before it talks about. How. In particular. This is. The flexibility allowed by the care body. Would. Intervene to. Denver news will go. Point two four. Zero. 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 B. Providing flexibility in architectural. Time. Please. Plus. Buildings. Use of open space. Door. Appearance. For. Relation. To. And then. In addition to that. We're all. Intervene to. And. Fifteen point four zero five. Zero. Or. Eight. One.[900.39]
Including submission and application with required type of view. That's our, uh, the showing subject. On the next slide, we get into applicable criteria associated with site design review. The next slide highlighting also the, the ones that we. Where there are again flexibility considerations, these are partially coming from. But on the next slide, start off with marketing and onsite specifications, the co requirement fifteen point two. Fifteen point two, zero, five, zero, two. Talking about parking area showing the requirements of N C. Four, four, zero. Zero, one, two. On the next slide, we go into, uh, for analysis of the number of the blowings, number of parking spaces required on home unit. Um, based on that real count for those, the parking space required. So the proposed products is proposing two hundred eighty-two parking stalls, which is twelve gallons short of the required. Based on what's involved. That's four point one percent of the standard. So. But as we mentioned before, the applicant's request of a modification, that minimum number of required parking states. They assume that it's like an adult portion. Section N C fifteen point two, four, zero, point zero, two, zero. That goes back to the lot coverage issue, the minimum issue, so. On the one hand, the lot coverage for parking exceeding criteria, the other hand. The minimum number of parking spaces below the criteria. So. What you'll see and in the supplemental package that we provided to you is that they're asking for flexibility especially in this. It was challenging to essentially give people a name and sign. One of the things that, that you did need a lot of. Wrong. Lot guard share of the combined. But then presumed that part of the. On the next slide, we get into setback from lot coverage. So the findings associated with the site design criteria. Maybe so they may be refer back to several sections found throughout the development standard course. And in this case, the whole height lot coverage, the proposed project requesting modification of regulations associated. There, um. With height, the height and all that coverage pursuant to that same. Plating and development section in N C fifteen, one, two, four, zero, one, zero, two, zero. That's like looking right here and they're allowed to make that request. On the next slide. Again, the site design, the analysis. There's actually fifteen point two, three, zero, one, zero, six, zero. These are the overall requirements for multifamily residential project. What this is, is there are several different ways that projects can essentially accumulate ones. And. The proposed project is required to obtain twenty points based on the scale and the category. And based on the evaluation and the provided staff of work, been had with comments, but then be able to follow. Thirteen points were awarded under site analysis, fifteen points awarded based on building sign. For the. But based on that. Next slide. We go to the public improvement standards. First, associated with grid standards. Um, going back into some of the pages you related to, uh, the fact you need for a policy. It was that same one that mentioned the law where. You know, it's going to be required to signify plans, including all tagging game requirements of section. Fifteen point five, zero, five, point zero, three, zero, L. The driveways to the northern and southern portions of the site will alternatively, the applicant can propose an alternative configuration to achieve a public current. At the west end of security, but also provides access to the northern. Basically making sure that if someone were to come off of that, that jury roundabout, that there is a way for the new. That some future development couldn't choose to put a gate right here. So in addition to that, there are pedestrian connections that are discussed on this line for the project, proposing pedestrian connection. Yeah, in general, the site, well, it's very metal and garbage located west of the site. Also pedestrian pathways connected to public driveway areas. And then last on this black hole at the bottom of the page, yeah, we didn't want to be required to install a transit landing path. A B M County Transit Stop along the site. On the next. Um, here we have a couple, uh, comments related to public utility standards under section fifteen point five, zero, five, point zero, four, zero. So the applicant will be required to submit final plans for both water and wastewater connections, meaning the city's, uh, public work, designing, construction standards. And public improvement permit application. And then additionally, the applicant will be required to report all required meetings prior to a global final plan. That's that. P U D section that we mentioned previously. And then section fifteen point five, zero, five. Actually fifteen five, zero, five, zero, five, zero, but they have the stormwater standards. There is a project included proprietary stormwater treatment engine set up. And they're going to be required to signify and private stormwater management system, leading the city to convert all the water, uh, how it works, designing, trying to make that permanent. Then with that, for this, our final slide, with that, Sam recommends a commission, we took out a planning commission for. Two, zero, two, three, dash, zero, nine, which includes a lot of the main modifications in playing new development. The U D two, dash, zero, 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 one, maybe this permits. Thank you for the question for. Here we go, we'll move on to the, um, public testimony portion. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
So you said in this plan, they've taken away parking places that should be there, but there's. A larger area for parking, that's what I'm hearing.
So the, the way that I accept that the applicant certainly knew when to share their, their thing. But they had the opportunity, there were a couple of little ways to tell them, they could have. Met the parking standard, but exceeded the maximum allowable parking lot coverage by one. Or they could have met a parking lot coverage standard, but, um, but would have required them to. Increase the request for the minimum number of parking spaces there. So basically you could have had. He would have, they would have been requesting more flexibility on one, more flexibility on the other, or this one, which is requesting. Moderate or lesser amount of flexibility. That makes sense, or is that really?
I'm just concerned that there. Allowing the amount of. Of parking spaces. Parking. Right, project, and I don't think there, there is any. Parking. For. From on street.
I think, I think the applicant, you know, we answered that really.
So this isn't necessarily a question of the application per se, or a procedure. So is this, do you say if old the regulations, does this conflict come up, or is this edict resolved by this particular specific? Should it be addressed in the future? In the P U Ds. In the P U D application, that may have processed. Since I've been here, this issue hasn't. But if a planning development application conflicts. It's playing, if they have their flexibility provision. So we analyze, didn't take provided recommendation, ultimately itself, supply a commission. Can you agree with staff's analysis on that, or do you want to take a different approach? I think that.
Then given that there are no further, um, questions to play, I will go ahead and open public custody. And bring up the applicant, and please come up and introduce yourself, if you have to.
Good evening, my name is Jesse and I'm at J T Smith Companies in our office. Uh, address is five, three, five, middle of. And, um. On, uh, Zoom with us, Mercedes with, uh, three, eight, three, eight consulting. And they use, and now, you know, this project. Uh, the same, so she is completely participating, uh, via Zoom. So, um, real quickly, just wanted to give a brief introduction to the project and, um. The lead from course of developing this project, um, and that we. May, uh, overshot. These six piles of residential unit, number of the scheme all. Set of this. Um, this question, and so why, first by spotted base, um. Very similar style. And so. Um, but Mercedes, uh, slideshow presentation. For your additional comments, uh, solution, uh, against audio sound. For them. They. Uh, should be able to hear us and get a bunch of. Take away Mercedes.
Thanks, Jesse. Uh, hopefully you all can hear me, we're having a little bit of issues on our end, but hopefully this audio is fine. Um, my name is Mercedes Sarah, I'm a senior planner with three J consulting, our address is ninety-six hundred southwest Nemus Avenue, suite one hundred, June, Oregon, nine, seven, zero, zero, eight. We'd like to thank staff tonight for their presentation, and we'd like to thank the planning commission tonight for their time. I assume you all can see my sheet, uh, screen I'm sharing. Correct? Yes, okay, J T Smith Companies is proposing a modification to Crestview Crossing P U D to provide one hundred and ninety-six multifamily apartments in place of. One hundred and ten small, single-family homes. We have a brief presentation to give, and afterwards we'd be happy to answer questions. Crestview Crossing Plan Development was approved in two thousand and eighteen, the original application had included two hundred and ninety-nine residential units, including eighteen large. Single-family detached homes, two hundred and thirty small, single-family detached homes. And fifty-one multifamily apartment units, along with four point four acres of commercial and a network of open space and natural areas. Through the development process, designer visions included adding one large, single-family detached lot, bringing the total number of units to three hundred, and adding a large. Stormwater treatment facility, uh, shown here in yellow. The proposed modification. Of the area identified in phase two, in the Crestview Crossing Plan of Ownment, will bring the total number of residential units on site to three hundred and eighty-six. Original design featured a hundred and ten small, single-family lots in phase two, which would be replaced with the one hundred and ninety-six multifamily units on a single lot. The P U D as modified will have nineteen large, single-family lots, hundred and twenty small, single-family lots, four hundred and, or two hundred and forty-seven multifamily units. Four point four acres of commercial, and then the same network of natural and open spaces. The area proposed for modification is zone both R two and C two, multifamily development is allowed outright in the R two and conditionally in the C two zone. The site has a maximum density point allowance of nine thousand six hundred and eighty-eight, the original P U D was approved. That was approved had nine thousand and two density points, and the proposed modifications of beauty will bring the total density points to the entire site to eight thousand one hundred and six. Table four of the transportation impact study submitted provides the updated trip generation for the site, which includes both the tenth and eleventh. Addition calculations. The proposed modification will cause an increase in one hundred and ninety-four weekday trips, however, both the A M and P M peak trips will see a reduction. The increase in weekday trips will have minimal impact as the current operating level of Crestview Drive is operating at a level service A. Additionally, the site is a nine-minute bike ride to George Fox University. The original approval included one hundred and ten small, single-family detached lots. Each home was designed with three bedrooms for a total of three hundred and thirty bedrooms, the total living area proposed was one hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and twenty square feet. The proposed modification will provide one hundred and ninety-six multifamily units on a single lot. Uh, with a mix of one and two and three bedroom units, bringing the total bedroom count to three hundred and fourteen. And the total living area proposed is one hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-one square feet. The multifamily buildings are the same style as those that are approved in the previous phase in the southwest corner of the site. The Newburgh Housing Needs Analysis identifies a need for over one thousand multifamily units in the next twenty years, Spring Meadow will supply nineteen percent of the needed multifamily units. Spring Meadow fulfills the city's deficit and available land for high-density residential, which eases the need for a U G B expansion for the city. The proposed multifamily site has been designed with eight three-story buildings, two hundred and eighty-two parking stalls. Ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven square feet of open space, which exceeds the minimum requirement of forty-one thousand, three hundred square feet. The recreation space will include indoor sports courts, picnic tables, lawn spaces, and pedestrian network, site will have fifty-six ground-level, single-level units that are ADA accessible or adaptable. The proposed P U D modification includes three modifications through that P U D criteria. Uh, the applicant is requesting a four point one percent reduction in the required parking, which amounts to twelve parking spaces. Modification for the parking coverage is being requested to allow thirty-four point nine percent of the site to be covered by parking, which exceeds the maximum allowance of thirty percent. However, the overall lot coverage is not exceeded. Final modification is for three-story buildings. To, uh, allow a maximum height of thirty-seven feet, four inches, this is consistent with the modification request in the overall original P U D application. Which had a maximum height of forty-eight feet. These modifications are discussed in greater detail in the letter provided and directed by Jamie Howesley of Jordan Ramis on behalf of J T Smith Companies. The proposed three-story buildings will not adversely affect the adjacent residential properties, the solar access diagram shown demonstrates the nearest blowing on the Oleana is located eighty-six feet from the nearest multifamily building. The proposed buildings will not shade the homes of the neighboring development. The original Crestview Crossing P U D included an application, or included an applicant-proposed affordable housing component of five percent of the units. The proposal preceded the Newburgh Housing Affordability C E T, which was in place at the time of permitting for most of the lots on site. The proposed modification would provide more affordable rental units. The current purchase price for homes on site is between three hundred and ninety-nine thousand and six hundred and ten thousand dollars. Mortgage calculator shown provides an example of a two-bedroom home with a twenty percent down payment. The estimated monthly payment would be two thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars, a five percent down payment would bring that monthly payment up to three thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars. As modified, Spring Meadow will pay approximately three million more in S T C fees to the city, Chalum Parks, including Newburgh School, C E T, that was previously. Then previously approved based on the current rates. As shown on the exhibit from the Newburgh Housing Needs Analysis, a housing, a household making eighty percent of the median family income can afford a two-bedroom apartment. But is not able to afford to purchase. The least expensive, single-family home in Crestview Crossing. A proposal to provide more multifamily units will provide an affordable alternative to those who are not able to purchase the home from the site. We thank you for your time tonight, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm happy to elaborate on the, uh, party, um, question that you had. So I actually submitted a letter to the record, if there, if you'd like to read it, but, um. We've got a little bit of a, a nuance in the code, um, I've actually been designing and operating. Having, uh, developments in urban neighborhoods for covered areas, and what. We found as operators of these facilities is we look at it as, at that parking ratios, uh, in the whole town, solving that, we'll be found. We've got a couple of, um, projects that would be strange. And in those scenarios, um, we do get a tenant complaining about parking there, that's not convenient. And because it's not as convenient, they don't like. And. Because there's that due. And so what we shoot for artificial. And those standards, we could do in a way. Uh, to get this in place, we don't continue. And then initially on some partners, we're required to have a ratio. And we'll be. Our property management, so it's, I think, the main part of numbers. That we're on eight. That was. And everything over, but that's still enough. A source. And what we don't want will cost and city, but environment, no. Right, so that adds, that adds, yeah, the, uh, ability, planning against the areas, and so. Your, your app, this project is a artificial. Time lines, actually.
So thank you, and then just a little question, then, that's why I, I, um. I like that.
Was it possible to diminish for maybe not require like. Will either of us. Well, that's not what the issue can be. Got the situation, you've integrated too much, um. On the bridge for parking right now. Or you got. I have some of those two factors ran upon each other, that pretty much paid out very efficiently. So we could supply enough of them. But we're offering. I understand that, but, uh, I don't think you can believe that if you have less. Presence in there. Perpetual. If we had less, more, more buildings. There could be a reduction. Yes, but there is actually a concern about being developed in first gen. Well, uh, for whatever reasons I had mentioned, uh, the, um, sort, um, we've all got too much of the state, single-family. Cash, but that's. But it's not that we're missing. Um, with the situation we're currently in, the permacities like that, um, it's extremely difficult. If. For this, yeah. Of all the prices, and so we're taking a, for that, that, um. Eight percent of the body of state. And I'm thinking forty-five percent. So. Trying to control things, um, by housing and, um. And just. Why we're in a most asylum, um, why clustering these buildings efficiently to give more space. Also for the buildings for the. Um, to give further setbacks. And, uh, we can do things better. Um, either way, things. Wants to take or. Just be. So.
Alright. For this class, can you straighten out, uh, well, your company, we're the county house committee, the city of Denver, and the Department of House Security Partners. Utilizing the family substitution program, it takes like even eighty ounce choice vouchers for this development. Blue and fall of the Department of House Committee's version proposed. Uh, you are in the no obligation to buy. Or to provide is not going to be done by the city staff. Um, which you know, we, we do take, uh, section hangout. Um, if all of them. It's actually, um, a lot of times, they're painful, because it's. What's your. It's very kind of fun, because that. It's actually others. We got, we'll say that the project is. Just finish. About six months.
Um, the original proposal, we're not looking hard, we will provide well. So in the original, she had posted, give all the items. Other than fire, student option. Um, this is. By, there, um, that. If, if this has. And, and this. I mean, in, in the third. Questions. Down about one. And yes, okay. Attention. Wish, for which. Project that's. You know, the project's already. That being. Us. The comfort. Industry. By simply. Don't all of the sessions. And by applying. Lower. Loss. Right. It also. Because. If you have eight thousand. And. I think that's. Marked. Which is. That. Um. Five days. Yesterday, seven other. Sales. If you're. Better lasting. You get four, that eight thousand. So. So the person is on the university account or revoked. Eight. How much would you pay that? I'm. The band. Uh, they, first of all.
Any other questions from the. Hey, thank you, I have to go ahead and, uh, move on on the public portion. Of our comments and, um. I'd like to remind everyone, this portion here is within five minutes, and I'll go ahead and. Be the name, but then I'm gonna come up forward, say your, um, unit for the record as well, and I'm gonna be here. And I'm gonna be here about.
My name is Russell Wong. I live in eighteen O'Leary, Illinois. I've lived here in the earth for constantly over thirty years. I've risen to the spirit of life in the city of Chicago. It will be dust that you didn't hear the lives. Part of the reason, the destiny he did. Very little. Very nice. Yes, the mayor, the president, that might feature all that. He had a dream. On that, it was. They all breathe. But anything that's not hard blown, but actually contacted would be in there. The people are always here. They are effective and very hard to. We had. Then all of a sudden, I was didn't. Actually, reduce our level of. For some time. That is, they know what. People learn. That that's where you go. They didn't. I'm sitting in a great station. For some. And how you change this habit. People are there on it, now that. I mean, people are saying, well, we're about that, and everything is very fair. And I hope you can really listen to the person who's crying out. I care, but those are really important. My opinion, very special. They sure are really huge. This is an area that I heard first. That's all very. And it's really great, really great. And it always my customer, and it's been very attractive. So in a portion of this conversation with us today, which is still very active, but my wife's going down, a hundred blocks. They were sure of the state of the situation, the various years. It's not what they assume. That we went from. Some, our vision, passion. Then we brought us a party. Then we brought with. And my first, the biotic member of the spirit. Not very unpriced, many, that the food is very important. If all of a sudden they handle someone who has slower discretion, just so the base can hold days to go back sooner. A little more. I don't, I don't pray about our city, she gave them this. But the thing they want to make about it, we put their doubts at my question. I don't want to break anyone. Is they. Certain things. They know, we do say that we cooperate with the reasonable. People ability or their profile. That's good. So we're thinking of coming out. And the first one, reasonable capacity, not. First one is great. But the greatest book in category, now, uh, three story part. Back to the story one, right up next. That's how many. It will earn you a statement and. Eighty every day, it's made this problem, some people will live in, live out different things. You do what they begin. Their system will be, very years, the power of the nation of the city. Too long out, it's a long. If you're the five. Under our government, I might say. You got a little private, very, I might say. I think the first. To assure you, you know. I have. First, the middle part, the common.
Okay, thank you. And, um, moving on, let's bring up Lisa out.
For the record, my name is Lisa Thomas. I live at eighteen O'Leary, Illinois. I am here, um, to speak about this. Major change because it is a major change. Um, I don't take those words lightly, if anybody cares for major change. I also hear the word of the people that these three or two that are rich. Customers, there is not one element that is original. Um, this process has been playing on for six years. Um, I'm just gonna read you the information that a lot gets through my virus submitted and you guys have access to it. Very good. Thank you for the thought. Public input is an essential part of making Newark a great place to work. This major modification application for this night for serious considering. One that ensures citizens of Newark are earned and valued. That our existing codes and processes are qualified. That our elected officials are assured the honor of who representing their constituents. And lastly, that our city act is a formidable matter and is not simply rubber stamped to developers, others evolving. I'd like to address this, then, because my chief is not here, but I will say to him, I extend my regret. Well done. Well played. Textbook story of the gold nine million dollar company cultivating the gold mine out of small hats. Before you create this development profit. Process had began in two thousand and seven, in the request of the administration of the gold of property. And a promise to purchase and develop a land responsibly. Measure thirty six, one twelve was brought before the voters on May fifteenth of two thousand and seven. As stated in the official Yountville County voter pamphlet. Those zoning may allow up to thirty. Thirty voting. This annexation was voted down to get on path. There's a given. When referrals. Six months later, this became under thirty six, one fifteen. And with one hand brought for the voter on November sixth, two thousand and seven. The department of mechanics will provide two voters that propose to be zone R one. Go identity residential and R two, medium residential. With C two, community commercial on the land close to those two five ninety nine W. The result of the closed zoning may allow up to thirty. Just that of dating the company submitted an argument in support of this annexation. Here's what he said. The proposal is simple and a false change. This annexation allows citizens of Newark and its citizens to define what change will occur. In any way. This annexation and the rest of the process of the proposal will only add sixteen. Sixteen home size, a model change. What did Ellen Alder say to this? She made it crystal clear in her argument in support of measure thirty six, one fifteen, as she wrote. Sixteen. Yes, sixteen homes will complement the existing neighborhood and homes will be filled by a local, well-known home building. She also stated that there will be protection of existing green space and establishment of additional open space with land space. This measure received approval by the citizens of Newark who rely on the integrity and honesty of the declaration presented in the November sixth. Two thousand and seven, official Yountville County voter pamphlet. The measure was approved and the parcel was denied. Having equipment illegally entered the parcel, he has been that a part destroying park treatment Polish. I stood in front of that equipment and the operator responded with every dirty day in the book while repeatedly lunging. Happening to the bucket at my dead height in hopes to his entity, and someday he can leave. I stood there, you know, on my cell phone, I called the city own parks of recreation district and the city of Newark. And then the operator received a call of the damage to the safety of the property. Being caught red handed, this improper action would cause the developer a fine of approximately six hundred dollars per daddy's heart tree. Instead, a settlement of breach with the city and a section of the land to date that to the parts that then donated to the city of Newark. And who will be in first line? Or prosecution.
But you're done. That doesn't make sense.
I would have to go back and do my notes, but I will contain what I can find.
Thank you. And one thing I'd like to add, um, simply deliver this, um, by the, this key, uh, by, uh, me here, so if you'd like, whether they call you a principal. Um, call this and allow fifteen minutes.
Thanks. Thank you. That's very nice. Appreciate it. Okay, so public meeting for health and progressive property development plan F F on designated and green space and the law. And the buffer between existing developed property on Leo Bay. A verbal promise was made by the then mayor of Newark, Mr. Bob Andrews. That the property would be developed responsibly and the green space and law would refuse any existing property owners concerned. The development, yes, including the area of the designated wetland one parcel. This was not a legal permitted activity. As the U S Army Corps of Engineers had not approved their permit, the jump was shut down, but eventually continues in non-wetland areas. It's now April of two thousand and nineteen and J K Smith had not adequately addressed the designated wetlands. U S Army Corps of Engineers stated the application is administratively withdrawn into a lack in response to requests for additional information. Development must be repeated. Some months on space for purchase in terms of addressing them all on site. More meetings and new plans were revealed. The green space and law have now been upgraded. A waiver was filed for against the city of Newark. As events have been declared, deviate from existing that was told, is me was once again in green. However, our concerns addressed by the developer, I will give you a quote. If you don't like what we are doing, buy the land and do what you want. Ask yourself, are these the type of developers that we need to see Newark a great place to grow? Who will hold them accountable if not? So here we are, it's May of twenty twenty three, we get another request from the developer to take away from the trees there. The city of Newark once again has a pay. Has this developer been on this? Unfortunately. And that is in good faith with this project so far. Are they being held accountable to their words and deeds? It appears to be a very long game of dating sport. How many mayors, city managers, council people, planning commission person and city planner are no longer serving since the start of this process in two thousand and seven? How many currently serving know the true history of the development of this land? From sixteen single family homes to two hundred and ninety nine stories, ways over high rises. And now a request to vote to three hundred and eighty six humans in the form of a apartment building? Wow, no buffer, no wall, an additional story, all for then existing homes. And all with only a minimal setback, fifteen family homes, the three hundred and eighty six. Is this developer acting in good faith? Will the planning commission and the city of Newark act in good faith towards their citizens with this decision for today? Please consider this request with great experience and discernment. I respectfully request it not approve this application for a major modification of the previously approved additional use permit. And planning of development by J K Smith, some of these LLCs. Back. This is the second meeting notice failed to ask for incomplete information. The first was for a meeting on December eleventh that was the location of the meeting. And this evening tonight that admitted the meeting start fight. And what does it say at the top of the letter? Whether these important submissions are deceptively intentional. Or incompetent administrative errors, they create and discourage the opportunity for public input and should not happen going forward. Please note, this is not just a request. But I remind you that this is a legal requirement in the state of Oregon. For the Department of Justice will read as follows. Content of notice must provide safe, kind and place of the meeting. Thank you very much. There are exhibits that have the voter catalyst that you know, the Army Corps of Engineers that are all provided, so we will have access to them.
Any commissioners, questions?
If I can do on this on the day, I, I would have to go back and step back, but, um, Don Lemon from the. They have already had this, it was faster, and then I'm, I remember the city manager's name. Um, and all of the plan, the fact that they have to decide.
Never. You're in timeline, I'm just trying to see this. What you supposed to see. Not that I doubt your purpose, because you're very well documented, and I have no doubt your bona fides, that, sorry about yourself, but. But do you have any written agreements to simulate? That you're talking about, verbal agreements, there, you go to one. In other words, do we have more than just your word going on for documentation? So shouldn't we decide in your favor?
Exactly. No, it was a public meeting, this is now. So I have a big thing in writing, it was, uh, handshake. And a conversation with Bob Andrews.
Uh, just, sorry, I'm trying to style here, um. Uh, so if there's a meeting like, like this, I think, so was there, then it's.
Yeah. Yes, I have a response to you, but this was not a formal party meeting. This is. We wanted to have kind of concern and don't worry, I fact your fact. This will be a responsible development.
Anything I can hook up? Or that there was an agreement?
As if, you know, you're lucky. Now, if you don't have any written happenstance. Or what was said in the private conversation. You know, legally or not.
Right.
Up to you.
Thank you. It looks like, um, most of the questions, so I think you will be one of the.
And I just have one final last statement, and that is. This is a quan vice judicial hearing.
Yeah.
requirements with a quan vice judicial hearing, but not in that prior meeting. Therefore, in the recital, it lists that the public was properly notified. You're gonna have to ask yourself, if you sign that document, and that's gonna be the report. And I have to know this quickly, and if you can find the address. Fine. Location. Right here.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. The case part, we wanted to build, we want your problems on a proposed new development in your neighborhood. Property owner in your neighborhood, same location as the city of Newark. For major compensation and previously approved additional improvement. And planning unit development at OR ninety nine W, stress, presently drive. You are invited to take part with the city to view this project by sending in your written comments for ten times for the planning phase. For more details about giving comments, please see back to the sheet. For more details about giving comments, please see back to the sheet. Proposed project with any modifications to previously approved case files P U D eighteen dash zero 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 one. For slash C U P eighteen dash zero 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 four. The applicant is proposing to construct eight multi-family buildings. Providing a hundred ninety six building units and place the previously approved. One hundred and ten small, single family E cash phones. The proposed development will increase total number of units of P U D on two hundred and ninety nine units. To three hundred eighty six units. The proposed multi-family development includes mixed unit tanks provided in the game garden sound. Apartment buildings and community related free recreation facility are used by the residents. Have a get J K Smith Cummings LLC telephone for listed property owner. Location of OR ninety nine W and keep spread the product tax lot number. Now working together for better community service and service. We're mailing you information about this project. We could go on land within five hundred feet of proposed planning unit development. We invite you to participate. The land use hearing scheduled for the planning division on May eleventh, twenty twenty three. If you wish to participate in the hearing, you may do so in person or be represented by someone else. You also may submit written comments, oral testimony, specifically limited environment for speaker. If you know your comments to the city, please put following information on the outside of the envelope. Bring the kind of file number to the G A O neighborhood planning department, key box nine seventy, neighborhood area nine seven one three two. All written comments must be received by four P M on Monday, May eighth, twenty twenty three. Written information received after the signing will be read out loud at the hearing. So if it's time limits for speakers, it will be included in the record. Their permanent proceedings. You can look over all the information about this project or drop comments off Newburgh City Hall. Four one four east first hearing. You can also buy copies of this page for a cost of twenty five cents paid. Project information application material access online. The steel of a staff report relating to the quote proposal will be available for inspection at almost seven days prior to the public hearing. If you have any questions about the project, you can. Call the neighbor planning division at five oh three five three seven one two four zero. Any issue which might be raised, so we fill in this case, so land use order stills loop up. Must be raised during the public hearing process. It was included in detail to enable the decision maker an opportunity to respond. After the full criteria, you may be decision on this application. Are found in Newburgh development code chapter fifteen two two five, chapter fifteen point two four zero and division fifteen point four hundred. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidence hearing, any participant made request an opportunity. You present additional evidence, arguments or testimony regarding the application. During continuance or extension of the record. Failure of an issue you raised in the hearing, the person or my litter or failure to provide statements or evidence sufficient to report. The decision maker an opportunity to respond to the issue or clues fueled from state land use or feel based on that issue. Planning commission will make a decision at the end of the public hearing process. You participate in the public hearing process either by test planning of the public hearing. Or by sending in written comments, you're sending information about any decision made by the city relating to this project. Eight all April eleventh, twenty twenty three. Uh, question for uh that right. For these states, um. That you can come to the planning commission and do not provide or this charity do not provide a conference. So this qualifier.
So I would like to acknowledge that I haven't created this, so it's using the submit by patent or submitted by Apple and so this might have been great there. So it should have the address. It should have the start time of the hearing. Those things do this on the project, what they need, we don't know. How they managed to not be noticed while I was considering that. Now a question from the chair for staff in the light of that, um. Would it be prudent to um was it a continual and have that sent on again to play? All the timeline. That is. I used to. That is one option. Good, we'll be continuing this, then now we've noticed. Even though it knows the pipeline and. You can go to maybe. We invite the. Lead to uh get another notice out. I think that might that might be prudent to. Uh, yeah, probably be. Mr. Chair, uh, ask just for me to take another one of the. Give me that right. Here. Um. Yes, absolutely. We continue with the public test of. Um, next up. Yeah, as the main thing. Um, we're doing. Or taken in.
My neighbor is asking my mansion like a tree of one of these, but we will drive and we want it for that. And basically, I'm over in that area because there aren't really a third home for us. I'm in my thirties and I don't make the kind of money that people are playing from out of the community too. So I can afford the homes that are just suddenly more even more than thirty. I watched that entire wetland area getting destroyed before that I can do theater, studies, turtles that I don't do anymore. All the off the creatures and the green space of the veil now is a lot of this disabled. Kind of a little bit longer. That's how much green space they've allowed. The reason why they created the water feature over here was because they couldn't fill copies on it. They tried. We took pictures and posted it on the community board on Facebook for people to see. They could not build houses where they put their cute little box because it was so wet. He was wanting to be wet. And all the houses all on that right, everybody looking around, they're running well, that doesn't flood them. Their backyard are used to. Not fair ground, not fair area for doors. I know here's the focus is all on the chromatics and all that, so I'll take them for you. This one is fifteen point two two five point zero six zero general condition used permit criteria and brief. It says the initial use permit may be granted through highest period of feature only if a proposal conforms to all of the following criteria. A, the location, size, design and operational characteristics of the proposed development are such that it can remain reasonably compatible. And have a minimal impact on the livability or appropriate development of letting properties and that surrounding neighborhood. With consideration to be given in harmony and scale, bulk. Coverage and density to the availability of public facilities and utilities to the generating amount of traffic. And the capacity surrounding street and any other relevant impact of development. As rest is stated, it's not harmonious with the neighbors. And you can see in the street, I don't know if you guys stay in the time you go out there, there's nowhere, if there's a dump truck that needs to go down that road. My mom's house on the other side of it, good luck coming around. If there's a fire and you have a fire truck to go down there, good luck getting it out of that area without backing directly out. There's no room. It's not safer put there. It's not safely in that area. It's not comfortable to build. It's not compatible. It doesn't conform with the saying. B, the location, design and site planning of the proposed development will provide a convenient and functional living, working, shopping. For civic environment and will be as attractive as nature unto use of this location and setting warrant. He's trying to cut corners with parking areas. Green space? No, but I love the environment so much, I want to run it over my bulldozer as soon as I can. I don't believe he's importing B either. And C, the imposed development will be consistent with this code. I believe I already heard me my point. Your guys' focus is on the law. I really hope you'll hold it. Do you see your community members? Care about this community, care about these people, care about this space. It's not just about building developments. I know everyone's claiming that there wouldn't be worse traffic. We have one thought more than we've ever had. Everywhere. I know you guys have all experienced it. It's taken out one of my friend's cars. They literally drove down the street. There's so much crazy happening that they can't keep up with it. They can't keep repairing all the roads. And you think three hundred more cars at least is gonna magically fix that? Oh, well, we're gonna get a coin toss of parking space, maybe kind of, because I'd rather have that. Let's just own local parking neighboring areas, which way the shopping centers kind of talk to those people? The entire area has their parking spaces, so people have somewhere to park their homes. It doesn't make sense. It's not fair. It's not right to people who live here all this time. And these are developers, they're coming from outside of Newburgh. You're not trying to keep all this development, all the money, you don't need it. All these big developers and big games companies, they're cutting corners. They don't follow the rules. They're building, exciting us and sitting in the rain. You guys have been outside in the rain. Do you want to live in a house that's completely soaked before it's soaked together? I don't think they should have my brain and knowing through and look at those homes. Lots of people went through with their dogs in those homes and I can tell you that, you know. I'm sure there is a right image now. It's not fair. It's not for the community. It's not for these people. It's fair to them. The whole focus was creating this new model is more meaningful. And I really hope we have something else driving out of this type of one. Thank you very much.
Just a second. If anybody have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. I think you. The bar was for guarantee. Against.
Uh. Uh, what I do like is that you're actually pretty important. So. That you're freezing, okay? That's some that's that's probably I can count my one hand. The number of people that have done that in my ten years. On my information. So so thank you for that. And and then definitely have our attention. With all all this going on, but again, whatever we decide, we have to make sure we back up. Because then they want to find some law, not because, you know. Trying to be overly efficient, but we're trying to make sure that things go back and the things we do decide stay. So just just be aware, we're not we're not against staying, but it's kind of thing I I share a whole year experience. But at the same time, we are facing a lot of pressure on top. Of the illegal start of the state of worry doing resets. And I don't want to do that or I'm more limited barracks than that, like says, you know, the the way things go, but. Were you increased, see, without without it being able to span the current project, always supposed to have. You're sure you're up against supply and demand. You have a lead supply and you want to manage what happens, right? And so that's anything that you said. You're in your thirties, you can't afford to have a pump. That's part of freezing. So you're you're in this, okay, I'm getting crap on. We're not building up or. Okay, I'm getting crap on because I'm recording stuff. It's already there. So. You're fine. I'm not saying you start, I'm just I'm just trying to lose date. What it is working against here. Okay, and so. Uh. I know that. Uh. Thank you, thank you. That's I probably went with that because again, it's not on you to pause. Try to try to decide. And then the other thing too is I would encourage you and and you as a scientist. To continue this regardless of the side. The city council, because guess what? We we don't actually decide these things currently on the, you made a recommendation. In this case. For sure that you wanted to make a decision. Right there, there you go. And so I I I'm guessing that that would happen anyway. So continue this, continue this to, you know, they they have to leave. Or whatever they didn't, but just be aware that, you know, it's it may not be able to do that in this. Thank you. Uh, next person. Over there.
I'm arguing against. Jason. Because there's such a thing to one case that it's. I don't remember who was the non-people to get them. These are people that Kevin and Poppy, because. That this firm is going to. We go against this. Because of the fear of, hold on, we don't know this role is gonna happen. And we can't sell the change. But it was the fact of the way it was being presented. They had swallowed me and. And we were feeling like. They weren't listening to us and we bring our concern. We do that thinking. Even your your number, they're not, they're not from. They don't know. Raising our chance here and the safety in terms of. And building our our friendships, our people. There were some people who have that just got property they want to build. So they did the vote, the actual vote of the vote. There were several weekends. And then we couldn't, no more pictures. And I go, oh, I actually. And I'll make sure that I wanted to have them on a weapon show here. So those of you that remember their picture that they they want to show you, what we do, you look at. Compared with. We're listening. And now they changed it. There was no proposal. About anything. At my bathroom. I think I'm on the old age. This is difficult to tell. I am in my backyard. I'm staring. That ends my bathroom. I've branched over and I can't. Have my bathroom. Because if you put a thing in. Well, there's a, and I'm not having to move. So dead inside that they have a set of police say that it's don't get you. There is, and you gotta let a chance for what it might be. I think these things are the truth they think of. That if my friend in the place in there or my family are out there. And so we also wrote this down here. That's still my yard in my house. Remember all the things? Because they were supposed to help bumpers. Between what they were building. And. I don't have a problem. I'm I'm seeing, I love the problem. So you're looking at me. When there were people that told this little cheat. They fit to the fit of the planning zone of order. Every single time they got approved. Or just a little bit more. Just a little bit more, just a little. Even three hundred and fifty. And I'm now concerned, I I have a road. And that if you go in a Google search. It will tell you. Do you get from last period, real length, all of that? There. That how folks are gonna end down in. They have asked for an inch, that inch, and it. Since they started this. They already have gotten the control. They already got approved and you're here again. So what's the? I follow my agenda and I didn't see where I've been here for updates. Where I had a screaming to my bathroom. When. When people that can figure, we care, we did, and we break our down, we know we got a road. Really broke this community and they're letting outsiders come in and destroy us. And then we. The only thing that we want is a money. We're feeling powerful. As my daughter was saying, we've watched this W bill. We knew the language was reaching smaller. We didn't, we didn't reach a score. They were buying foundations. It was raining, it was snowing. And the, the walls were sitting out there in the rain. And in the snow. And then we put them up on that. Then they brought them. That's not a concern, that's not my special thing, but I do know. That is element of danger in the future. But do you think a few years ago, the people that moved in there? And they're getting sick, and going to figure out why, that would be a rapid care. This is our. They don't care. We didn't jump, that was my, we were, we're the small town family, feeling. I've got them in my backyard. I have them. What we have. I was worried.
Okay, um, that's kind of strange there. Um. And I have no other public comment requests, so I'd like to pause or rebuttal to the. Time to rebuttal if you like. Getting where the reverging, how's the? Uh, one two one one seven. Turning for, I think. Um, and the, the, the inclination of the commission is taking this. President.
Yeah, yeah, um, thank you, and yeah, I think. So personally, if you can just, in, 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 because this is. Everything is okay. Sure, I think you're right. I like the arguments, I. If I were to vote today, I'd probably say vote for Sarah, uh, because of the. You know, the need of. But I also would like to be everything that's rightly entered from. So I think that might be better. Mr. Chair, it will be. Actually, I think. So sweeping the record open so that. I guess. Yeah, so if, if officials do, do respond. Keep the hearing open. That's about the end of it. If the year is June eight. In twenty twenty seven. Staff, we've gone, we've had, we're dealing out, they do those all projects. I'm very. Need to be subject to pattern now. Sure, I, I think, I think this is very. It's, I mean, you need, right? Uh, being near and big building. I don't know. There, I had. I think this is. People have to look at all of that, who's on top stage. Yeah, we're in a very, they're both, you know, yeah.
Thank you, we have a, uh, portion to continue a second, so we'll get a little.
Sharon Supreme. Lee Cindale.
Yes.
Stephanie Hall.
Yes.
That's right.
Yes.
Yes.
Mike Purvis.
Yes.
Even.
Thank you, the, uh, which I have to give out. So this is continued, meaning the change day, twenty twenty three, being, uh, I'm official. At seven P M and twelve ten.
Yes, it looks like that. So this, this, uh, for you. Okay, this is what progress is in Minnesota. Okay, this is already. So this might be one of the kind of days to find out.
That, 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 that.
And a lot of the, 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 the. No.
Thanks.
But, but what you, what you can do, um, like I said, if you want to know the day, you find out.
Yeah, yeah, we do know, yeah, so, okay, go ahead, continue with our business here. Committee, and next up on the agenda is. And, um, I'm. So I don't just sort of stack, um, you have in your, uh, in your calendar, your. Your forwardable meetings, that will change, uh, yeah, another continued area. Uh, just being aware that you know a lot, I need to. For, uh, for June eight. Um. Four, five. Two continued areas, something pretty new. So just make sure you're blurred out. Um, and then you've got, uh, two plus education hearings that are spread out upon within the schedule for you in July meeting. We don't have anything right now, but August, it's going to change, you never know that. Um.
I don't make challenges up.
The, um. Other items are related to council goals, council day is ready, here, pack. Those were adopted, I'm talking to sharing information so that people are aware. Then the, uh, next item on the agenda is related to action that they before you that went on to city council. So the city council then approved the, uh, middle of the land condition. They, uh, accepted the housing production strategy. They approved the multi-family code of products. And they adopted, you know, then it's. Lot of master. And that is all in that issue segment. Except in place, and then it's about vacation. Which would be really free, and you know, we're. Still, still running tight, and still have a lot coming before you as well as some part of the project, so there's no issue. On the short term. So hopefully, this could end, possibly, they try to down and not have, you know, initially thought about. In the, over giving to each other. Other you, so, um, thank you.
Thank you, right? Um, I don't know if that's possible. Um, if saying Fisher, chair and vice chair are being noted. Um, each year when I say commissioner age under members. Immediately their vice and positions. I'm saying how to say, yeah, that everyone's. Uh, addressed to the, addressed to our furniture, and so I don't know if there's, and when I get on, there's, they are. They can our area instead of paying, they can, uh, comment, hopefully, that difficult to figure out.
We can go back, we can check it on the page there, check that, okay?
Thank you.
Meeting up. Okay, it's got, I'll go ahead and adjourn. The, uh, twenty twenty three meeting of the Newburgh Department of Planning Commission.